We all set and back?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, let's call the October 10th, 2018 Heinsburg Planning Commission meeting to order. So first order of business is agenda changes. Anyone have agenda changes? Okay, we'll move on to number two, official map revisions. We have a whole half hour for this, so public comments and questions. You sure you don't want to comment? Sure you don't have any questions?
I can tell you that, as I mentioned in the email, the letters went out to affected landowners, uh, but they went out later than I had hoped, just middle of last week. So I anticipate you'll probably hear from people, but not at this meeting, probably at your next three.
Maybe next meeting.
Maybe. You may not hear from anybody, but I know we got a call. I've talked to, um, or our offices talked to just two folks thus far. Um, I gotta run over and, uh, chat with, uh, the Mead brothers over at Hart and Mead, but I gotta get my snow tires on, so I said, "I'll come over, everything will work." Um, yeah, so probably if we're gonna see people, it'll be at your, your upcoming meetings. Kyle, um, received, Kyle Bostwick, who's in the audience for the viewing, uh, folks on TV, uh, received a notice. Um, he was one of just the three, I think, parcels in the Farmall Drive neighborhood to get the notice, um, and only because there, there isn't much in the way of new community facilities, uh, being proposed in that development, but there are future road connections shown on the north side and the south side and the, well, the north and south side. So I just wanted to notify the folks who are on those ends, um, even though it's unlikely that those facilities would have any impact on their property, cause right away and room is already there.
Right. I think there are, there are standing concerns with those, so it's, you know, that are not really property related, so it's good to get the notice.
The other notice that went to Kyle's neighborhood was specific to Kyle's row of houses on the west side of the project, because we do show a future trail through the, the west side of what's called Lot 31, which, uh, the town owned for a while, and then, uh, Kyle and his neighbors purchased, and so it's back in private ownership. You're, you're, you're aware of all those intentions to...
Yeah, we have every desire of, uh, we grant easement to VAST every year, and our understanding, in fact, the language in the document with the town is that we will, um, uh, you know, put, allow the trail to go through in concert with the, the VASTRO.
Right. And that's what the official map essentially shows, both the existing one and the proposed one.
So some of the areas that will have an impact, you haven't heard from the folks who, who own those lands?
No, just, just two, two landowners thus far. Yep.
How many letters went out?
Uh, I think it was 65.
Okay, wow.
Well, thank you for getting all that out.
Yes, my, uh, ambition is to get, uh, all of this same information to our webmaster, uh, this week, so that over the weekend, he can create a page for this on the website, and then next week, I can do the front porch forum post to the general community saying, "Hey, this is happening, and we've informed landowners, but we also want to inform the community at large," and anyways, that's the plan for rolling it out to the rest of the town.
So is this commission, uh, I mean, what, what I received in the mail, is it pretty much the finished product of your collaborative thoughts, or, and you're just looking at the next four meetings for feedback, and then maybe, uh, edits and amendments if somebody is coercive enough? I mean, are you spending the next four meetings continuing to adjust and massage and whatnot?
There was a lot of adjusting and massaging that got to the draft five that went out, so unless, unless all of you have different ideas, my thought was, you're ready to make changes and adjustments, but those would be driven by the people sitting in these chairs saying, "I think you ought to change this," or do that, as opposed to, you're not still thinking of talking about it more on your own without...
We devoted four meetings, which is why I was curious as to, you know, whether or not there's movement, or if you're going to do this sort of thing three more times.
Well, we are. I mean, I would characterize, you know, what we're in right now as feedback mode. I mean, we realize like, like tonight, the notice just went out, uh, to landowners. Um, they probably haven't had time to digest it, so if we just had one meeting tonight, that would be really unfair, right? So, you know, and it'll, it'll take time for, for people to come in and, and, you know, they may have questions a week, or, you know, two weeks, four weeks from now. You know, I think we can, you know, hold feedback that long, and wouldn't be an issue.
Alex, you'll be bringing in any feedback that you get?
Absolutely, yep.
And we have other projects we're working on now, anyway, so we've got plenty to do during our meetings.
And we, you know, we try and end our meetings early, you might have noticed, so...
Two years too late.
Yeah, it's not too late.
Yeah, so, well, it seems like we're skipping everything, but, um, with no public comments right now, uh, let's move on to Village Area Public Open Space Design Standards.
All right, so, see ya, Kyle.
Kyle, nice seeing you.
Good to see you.
Catch you around.
See you later.
All right, so, uh, the, you were on draft six of that document, and, uh, it was sent to the town attorney for comment. I had some specific concerns about possible constitutional takings issues, and wanted, wanted to make sure he thought through that, as well as just provide feedback on the, on the draft. And then, um, I sent it out to, to, I made an appeal to planners in the Vermont Planners Association to do a peer review. A bunch of people expressed interest, and I got reviews back from, I think it was five or six. Um, and as I mentioned in the email, it's, it's sorting through all those and presenting those comments to you is a little difficult, so I have some notes that I can talk about. But I did want to walk through the, all of the very specific comments from the town attorney. Um, so if you have that document in front of you in one way, shape, or form, and you know what, Maggie, I don't think I printed that one. I'm sorry.
Village Design Standards.
Yes, draft six.
Yeah, included it in the packet.
I did, and I, sorry, I had all sorts of paper copies for the official map discussion, but not for this one. You could look on with John.
Well, I've, I've read it.
Okay.
He could come over here, and I got it as well.
So, um, so taking it from the top, um, the town attorney has, I guess what I won't do is go through just some grammatical changes he made, they're sort of relatively non-substantive, but I'll, I'll give you the substantive ones. Um, so in the, in the definition of public open space, the first paragraph proposed to be added to section 10.1, uh, he suggests adding the word "non-exclusive" in that first phrase. Public open space, an area for general public use, and he says, "Put in an area for non-exclusive general public use." Seems like a reasonable change. Um, and then if we move down into the actual standards...
Can, can we stop there?
Yes.
So, "non-exclusive," meaning, I mean, I would take that as, you can do anything in this open space, we, we don't exclude. I mean, I mean certainly, you know, if, if you put up a bocce ball court, you wouldn't, right? You wouldn't entertain baseball there, and it's a bocce ball.
I think, I think what he actually means is, is the, "Non-exclusive qualifies the following term, 'general public use.'" So I think what he's trying to indicate is that this will, this will clarify that, um, you, you can't exclude certain members of the public from this use, it's meant to be non-exclusive, uh, everybody is able to use it. Not that the use is, you know, one kind of recuse over another, or not exclusive in that sense, but that the, the types of people that would be welcome there, is, it's a non-exclusive group.
Maybe it's my naivete, but I would say public does that.
Well, I think, sort of thought that too, but, uh...
Well, this way, people from other towns are able to use it too, that's what I see. People from Moncton could stop by and have a picnic, or...
I just don't want the guy playing baseball on my bocce ball court.
Well, yeah.
I don't think that's what this wording was meant to address. Um, well, in any case, you're not bound to incorporate all these suggestions, but that was one. Um, the next one was in the actual design standards under applicability, it's on the same first page there, and, uh, the general comment was that, uh, there should be some verbiage in this applicability section that connects the need for open space to the impacts that larger developments, um, create, uh, and specifically in this area of town, the village growth area. So, uh, David Rue is our counsel on this, from Stitzel, Page &amp; Fletcher, and again and again, his comments focus on, you've got to make the connection to the impact, not just your desire to have this happen, there's got to be a nexus between, um, the, the development and its size and scale, and the need for this public open space. So he, he thinks, he's not proposing a change to any numbers in this paragraph, but just verbiage that talks about the, the need, why this public open space is needed, uh, for these larger developments. And it is in this paragraph where we, we, where we set the applicability criteria. We say 10 or more, um, new residential dwelling units, or 6,000 square feet or more of new non-residential space. So I, I think he wants us to say, "If you're gonna make that line there, tell us that, something about how projects that size and larger create the need for open space."
It's, it's an interesting argument line, because I, you know, I, I think a lot of zoning that we discuss and put together is, is not necessarily having a nexus, more than this is how the town wants it.
Yes, and I think that David's point is that when it comes to, um, court precedent, the courts look for the nexus. They, they look for, um, both the rationale for the regulation, uh, but also in the specifics of it, uh, they want to see an individualized assessment of a project versus a requirement. Um, he's got some more comments further down on this page in that regard.
Well, it, I mean, it, it seems like that's pretty clear in the document. This many square feet gives you, you know, this much open space. I mean, there's a, there's a clear linkage between built area and open space.
Yeah, and I think his suggestion for this applicability paragraph is just, um, general language about...
To serve the needs of...
About, about why it's necessary in general, and then we go down below to find out for a particular project how much. In any case, that was a, that was a comment. Um, moving down the page, we talk about size and location. He proposes adding a sentence relative to what I was just talking about, saying, "The type and design of public open space shall have a nexus to the nature of the proposed project." He wants that word actually in there, "nexus." Um, we say in that first sentence that...
Have you heard the next line?
What's that? We say in the first sentence that, uh, that the public open space shall be of a type, design, and size, and location to attract and facilitate community use and enjoyment. And so his proposal is, well, add another sentence after that, saying, "The type and design shall have a nexus to the nature of the proposed development." Um, so here's a, here's a bigger suggestion. With regard to that table, um, again, this is based on court precedent. His, his comment, uh, is that, uh, the DRB needs to make an individualized determination, uh, that the required dedication of public open space relates to the nature and extent of the development's impact. And his suggestion is, given that, um, it's nice to have specific, uh, numbers for how much should be there, but he, he says, "You should make those guidelines, not minimum requirements." And we do this in the regs already when it comes to parking. We used to have, uh, parking standards that were, that were very specific, if you have, for every 400 square feet of retail space, you have to have this many parking spaces. And the DRB would just look at the table, and developers would look at the table, and that would be that. And several years ago, and some changes we made, not at the recommendation of our attorney, but, uh, we changed that language to say, "Here's the table, we didn't get rid of it, but this table represents guidance," and that the actual parking required, um, will be determined by the DRB based on the needs of the project. And so you get an individualized, uh, determination of how much parking is needed. David is basically saying, "You, you should do something like that for this, uh, uh, minimum amount of public open space." We can still say there's, you know, recommended minimum amount, but have it be a guideline so the board can flex based on, uh, that individualized determination on a project-by-project basis. So that's a pretty significant change, um, but that's his suggestion.
So both for residential and non-residential development?
Yep. On page two, he's got some typographical suggested changes, um, and then he has a substantive one in the middle, where we say in the draft that a 10-foot width, we talk about trails and pathways being eligible to count towards your public open space, um, and that we say that they can count up to 30% of the requirement, or the guideline, if we were to change it to that. Um, and then we say, "A 10-foot width shall be used for the purpose of calculating the trail pathway area, unless the DRB approves an alternative width." And his comment was, typically, trail easements are 20 feet wide, and then the trail can be, you know, five feet on either side of the trail within that 20-foot easement, so he suggested widening that to 20 feet, giving them credit for the, what would likely be the full easement area, even if the trail doesn't, you know, physically occupy that whole easement area.
Are there other places in our regs where we actually, um, cite the 20 feet?
There is one, um, I don't have my regs in front of me, and my computer's still updating, so, yes, yes, there is one where, uh, we specifically give the DRB the authority to, uh, require a 20-foot wide easement for sidewalks and paths.
I mean, it, it seems reasonable, as long as we're consistent.
Right.
You can, you can eat up a lot of square area that way, though, I mean...
But we cap it at the 30% rule, so regardless of how much you get credit for, you can't, you can't just use trails.
You can't exceed 30.
Yeah, you can't just use trails to meet the, the requirement.
Okay.
Alex, point me to that page again, page two or three?
Page two, page two of four.
Oh, I'm on the wrong document, I guess.
I have two of three when I open it.
I have two of three.
One of three.
Okay, we're all on different documents.
It's a three-page document, I'm on number two.
Okay, so what...
Same here.
The version I have would definitely have different versions.
This is draft, draft six.
Oh, wait, I see it at the bottom.
Huh.
Of page one.
Print this from what you sent out.
Yeah, yeah, no, and it's the same...
Trails and pathways outside of the open space area may constitute up to 30%.
Yeah, so you found it.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, why are we...
At the bottom of our page one.
It goes on to...
Why are we have different... Oh, I know I have different pagination, I'm sorry. Mine has all of David's comments in it, so it forced the, it expands, it moved everything along. Yeah, apologies. Anyways, uh, so that was his suggestion there. Um, he's got a few more typographical things. Um, okay, um, I'm not sure what page it's on, I think it's on page two for you guys. Uh, it's the section that begins, the paragraph that begins "Above Ground Utility Infrastructure." It's, uh, just above the underlined off-site allowance paragraph. So the paragraph that says "Above Ground Utility Infrastructure," um, there's a sentence in there where we say, "Ground-mounted solar installations shall be placed and designed to be functional and visually interesting." Um, he wants that deleted. He says, "We don't, we can't regulate those, the, the public, you know, uh, utility commission does that." Um, and they don't count as opens, public open space, I think we say that somewhere else. Um, so he's like, "Just get rid of that sentence. It's nice that you want them to look pretty, but you're not, you're not gonna have the authority to compel that."
Well, can we put that in as a "should," and not a "shall"?
But it's interesting that we did, because we just went through the whole thing where the, the only comments we can make about solar is the...
Screening.
Yeah, exactly.
The screening of it.
So it's kind of interesting that that slipped out.
Thought if we had it in the document, that they would, or, look at it.
Well, but what they said was that you have to, you have to apply the same standard for those as you do to other commercial development, and this isn't the same idea. I, I think he's right, I think we had good intentions here, but I, I don't think that would stand up under court challenge.
And what are you saying, we do have something in our document that will stand up?
Yes, yes, in terms of the screening of these ground-mounted solar installations, we have a section that was crafted that, that will stand up. This, this is a different, this is different language from the...
I mean, it's, it's a weird, it's a weird mechanism, right, with that language, cause we don't, we never hear those requests. As a town, right, Public Service Commission takes our regs into account. Um, I mean, can we, can we leave the language in there for utility boxes, but say "should"? It's not enforceable, but at least it says, "Hey, you know, could you..."
Well, so his suggestion was to...
Encourage to, or...
His suggestion was to leave all the stuff about, um, utility infrastructure, boxes and cabinets and vaults and all that, but, but, but don't, but delete the sentence about ground-mounted solar installations. Well, you can think about it, but, but he was pretty firm on that one, uh, based on what his experience has been. Uh, let's see...
So they would, so the Public Service Commission could simply say to us, "You can't, you have no jurisdiction over that. We're not reviewing this application based on that criteria."
Yeah, and I...
Thank you very much, and, and that's the end of it.
And I think, more importantly, these, this language is designed to be for the Development Review Board to use in the review of a project here at the local level, and I think that if a, if a developer said, if the DRB, let's say, looked at this standard and said, "You did not place the ground-mounted solar installations in a way that was functional and visually interesting, um, we're gonna condition your project that you have to change it, or we're gonna deny you," um, that, that decision wouldn't hold up in court. The court would throw it out and say, "You don't have the, you don't have the jurisdiction to..."
Right.
So...
Yeah, I'm...
But encouraging them to do that...
Well, that's true, yeah, I mean, that's Joe's suggestion to change it to be not a "shall," but a "should," or encouraged.
Some, some, some way of saying, "We'd really like this to be a standard that you would, that would guide you. We understand, we can't make you do it."
I mean, what I'm, what I'm concerned about with that comment, I, I don't know a way around it, but, um, it, it seems like the, the town has a, a real interest, and it's been expressed before, is that, you know, if you, if you take what's across the street, right, um, the way those solar panels are in there, right, we get more comments about that, right? How those look.
How do those happen?
And, you know, that's a, that's a smaller installation, I don't think that came under PSB, or whatever, I'm not sure, right?
It didn't, it didn't come under us, but, uh, yeah, I don't know if it went through the Certificate of Public, I think it did, actually. It was different back then, though.
Yeah, I don't know, but, but, I mean, you know, if, if something is smaller, right, it, you know, isn't, isn't part of a PSB consideration, but it's ours, I would, I would think we want something to say, "Hey, you know, do the right thing," as far as...
Yeah.
The other awkward piece of this that David noted, um, is that in, in a paragraph further up, we, we, we say, "What does not count towards open space?" And we, and we specifically mention roads, access drives, parking areas, uh, utility infrastructure, and ground-mounted solar installations. So we're saying, "If you have them, they're not gonna count towards your required open space." But then down here, he's like, "But then down here, you're telling them what, how they have to arrange those."
Yeah, I mean, that's...
If it doesn't count towards your open space, then what you're doing is you're, you're introducing new regulations to guide these facilities, and you're not enabled to do that, you're not, you don't have that jurisdiction.
I mean, that, that, that part of it is quirky, that we're telling them, "It doesn't count as this, but you gotta do that." I, I'll admit that. I'm just, I, I, you know, I, I think that if there is any mechanism, you know, we ought to be thinking not only of the big industry-scale, you know, solar stuff, which we want, but we want neighbors to be happy with it. And by the way, not all neighbors are happy with what happened up on...
McGee Hill.
McGee Hill. Um, you know, we, we wanna, um, you know, we, we wanna try and, and prevent issues that have come up before.
Yeah, and I think the way to do it is in that screening section that we adopted, um, and...
Is there anyone who designs a ground-mounted installation to be non-functional? Why would you put it up if it's not gonna be functional?
I've known some engineers.
Not on purpose.
The way this was written, I can see how you're reading it that way. It was meant to, it was meant to say, uh, "Designed to balance functionality and visual interest." Like, we're, by, by saying this, we're acknowledging that it, it has to be functional, that's the first purpose of it, but we also want it to be visually interesting.
This is not addressing whether this kind of space is part of open space or not, right?
Right.
And, and the attorney seemed to be questioning, "Why, why say that when you said initially, 'This, this can't count,' so why are we now telling them, 'If you do it, you have to do it this way,'" which is the same way we deal with parking lots. We say, "You can't count a parking lot as open space."
Yep.
But when you do a parking lot, it has to meet these standards. The parking area has to be so big, there has to be travel lanes...
Probably don't do that in the same, in the same...
That's, that's not here about parking.
Well, that's what your point is, John, right?
My, my point is, they're similar applications.
Absolutely.
So why not talk about how you do install solar, ground-mounted?
Oh, you, I think his point is, you do do, you can do it, but this isn't the right section to do it in. And, and we have done it in the, the Commercial Industrial Design Standards, where we have a, a screening section that applies to solar, as well as Commercial Industrial, cause that's what the statute says it has to do. So I think, you know, you're right. We say parking lots can't count towards open space, but we don't, down here, then tell people how to design a parking lot. We do it in another section of the regs.
Okay.
Um, and, and we have design standards for parking lots, just like we have design standards for screening of solar installations.
Is that screening then only in commercial industrial areas?
No, it's everywhere.
Everywhere.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
In the, the screening that's required, it says here, "Well-screened." Are we more specific somewhere else about what that means?
No.
So they could put up a...
Put up a well.
Lilac bush.
Yeah, that's, that sentence is referring back to above-ground utility infrastructure, like cabinets, vaults, HVAC equipment and the like. And you're right, we don't, we say "well-screened," but we don't necessarily define what that means.
Yeah, 'cause I, I looked at, over by Kenny Drug again today, and, and all the utility things are right there, totally visual, although they're screened from the apartments. But the parking lot, you can see them all, so...
So that sentence that you're suggesting, that he's suggesting dropping, is that sentence essentially, uh, included in our other regulations about screening? No, we don't say "placed and designed to be functional and visually interesting," we just say "screened."
Yep.
So could we move this sentence to that area where we talk about screening and include, "This also has to be visually interesting"?
Um, I, we could, we could talk about that, I think that that's a different topic, and, um, my recollection of when we did do this, when we updated our screening to, um, also apply to ground-mounted solar installations, the... also apply to ground mounted solar installations, the statute says that we have to apply them equitably or equally between solar installations and commercial industrial, uh, buildings and, and uses. So i- i- if we were to apply a visually interesting standard, if we were to add that, it would need to, it would need to apply to their, their uses. Yeah.
I don't know if there's a, there's a way in here, but it, but it would seem that the, the reason for this language is presently written is to not impair the look, feel, usability, um, appreciation of the open space that you provided. All right? So, I mean, that's, that's the nexus of, of why we're doing this.
Right. But I think the, well, go ahead.
So if, if instead of putting the obligation on, on the installation, saying, yeah, open space should not be visually impaired by adjacent blah, 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 blah.
You could get away with that. Yep.
No.
That would be a crafty way to go around, go around the, yeah. Yeah? You want me to write that in?
Well, only if you think that solar arrays or what, what didn't you put it visually disturbed?
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean-
I mean, if you think they're as a part of a, a development, I, because I personally would be thrilled to see developers putting in solar arrays as part of a development.
I, I agree. I, I, I think as a town we are. Would, would you be thrilled if everything looked just like what was across the street and was face on you like the backside framework?
Well, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's like the development itself. I mean, we have, you know, the strongest screening regulations we could have written. And I think stronger than any other town in the state.
I don't know about that, but we were early in that game because of, uh, Lynn Duffy.
Yeah.
Pushed you to do it.
So honestly, I, I, you know, as we're going through this, I mean, we, we know that this is not the right place for visually interesting. Um, I just have to wonder how, how much we're going to clutter this up. I mean, we could say the same thing about parking lots or whatever.
I mean, the visually interesting thing kind of says to me, don't, don't use a, you know, wire mesh fence, right, with-
But that, that's why, but that's what we did in the screening.
Yeah, I think, I think you could argue that if a ground mounted solar array was placed next to a public open space area, um, it would be required to, to be screened because of our screening section. And if it's properly screened, it doesn't need to be visually interesting, right? It's going to blend. It's going to be partially hidden. So why, why have this verbiage in there?
The screening that happens as part of the Bristol Bakery Kenny Drug area that you were referring to, it's screened from the occupants of those buildings.
Well, we didn't, we didn't have this language for that project, so-
In that example, it's screened from, it is screened from the people who live in those buildings, but it's not screened from, uh, everybody who uses those public spaces.
Yeah. I mean, that's actually-
Do our screening regulations say now, screening means screening all around?
I mean, that, that's actually a tough one, John, because you, you think about a utility cabinet, right, a transformer. That thing has a hinge on it, right, that opens in one direction.
Right.
Right? And you need space to open that in one direction. If, you know, if, if you can't do that, it's not a functional utility cabinet. Or the next time your power goes out because the, whatever's in there blew, you're going to be really upset.
So, so you have to leave that kind of space?
You gotta, I mean, yeah, but it, it, it's, it's more than just the space to get somebody in there. Um, you know, like a, a transformer thing, right? Well, the next time that transformer blows, and it will blow.
You need to get a, something you can lift it.
You need to get a truck in there.
Right.
Right? To crane that, the old one out and put the new one in, you know?
Well, I think that this language, um, so the answer to your question, John, is no. We, our current regs don't have specific language about screening utility cabinets. This proposed language should help in that regard, at least with, when, when we're talking about public open spaces. The, to the extent that a, a project is creating private open spaces or just private spaces, uh, we, this language doesn't address those. So you could still have utility cabinets in those spaces that would be visible and, but I think that's part of the point of this is to say, well, if you're doing a public open space, we do want them well screened and placed at the perimeter and that sort of thing. Um, so I think this language is good in that regard. Um, but it's true, um, Brad Grabowski, actually, I don't know if you remember Dennis, when, when he was in front of the board, dealing with the repercussions of, of the, of the incorrect construction that happened there and how he was going to mitigate things and some other site plan issues that cropped, cropped up, um, there were some screening requirements that the board had imposed, um, on the utility cabinets and, and Brett went to Green Mountain Power and he got just their normal spiel, which is you gotta, you can't plant anything within X number of feet of these, of these, uh, electrical vaults. Uh, and like Joe said, on the side that we need to get into, you can't have anything at all. Uh, so the board talked to him about arbors and fences and hinged doors and it was, it was difficult to, to try to figure out a way that would work.
There's a certain distance that you have to stay away from all four sides of a cabinet.
Yep.
Depending on what functions happen on those four sides.
Yep.
That's the rule. The screening can come up to that distance around all four sides. Why not require a developer to do that?
Well, in part because the distances are significant enough that it, it creates little pockets of, of, uh, empty space, uh, little bubbles around these utility cabinets.
I, I think that the challenge should be with the designers, the landscape architects and the land planners and architects have to deal with that inside buildings all the time. You can't have a little tiny room with a panel board in it. You have to have certain room for the people to service it. It's, it's not any different in my mind than that. Yeah, it takes some innovative thinking to not create wasted, you know, bubbles of, of space. You need to take that and make something good out of it, which I think a good designer, a thoughtful designer, a progressive designer can do. So why-
If they're thinking about the utilities, yeah.
Why should we as a town back off from that and saying, wow, you could, do the best you can?
Well, I don't think we are. I think this language does go for it.
Do we have regulations for that?
At the same time, there are safety and maintenance issues with four sided enclosure.
Absolutely.
And still, there's things you could plant that, so if they get crushed, they'll grow again next year. They don't have to be trees and permanent shrubs and there's a way to hide those things.
I mean, there, there are these kinds of distribution boxes for the telephone system sprinkled all out in the rural areas. And lo and behold, they are actually screened. They, the telephone company has planted screening and placed those units against shrubbery that was already there, just native stuff growing alongside of the road. They were able to carve out an area. They can back their pickup right to the door of the thing. You know, it can be done.
Well, and I think this language requires it. So it's not like the language doesn't do that.
Okay.
It, maybe it doesn't have the specificity that Barbara would like because it's using the words well screened. So if we could, you could think on that and think about if there's a, a better term. In some of the other comments from other planners, they, they also made comments, I can't remember that particular one about this is too vague, you know, either delete it or define it, that sort of thing. So, um, yeah, the more specific we can be, the better, as long as it doesn't turn into a 10-page document.
Well, screened 12 months of the year, year round. In other words, don't use deciduous shrubbery to screen something that loses all of its leaves through at least half the year, if not more.
Personally, I'd, I'd love it if it said well screened and/or, um, uh, what's the right term? Decorated. Have you seen the, the cabinets that actually look like artwork?
Absolutely.
And, you know, when I see those, I'm like, I don't want to see shrubbery around those. I want to see those. Those look really interesting. Wouldn't that be an interesting way to not have to deal with this?
Maybe that's an option that the DRB can, can offer.
I've never talked to any of the utility companies to know whether that's possible or, and maybe it only happens, you know, in the Burlington, uh, electric realm or something, you know, or they're more progressive. Um, well, so I'll make a note that well screened, we were talking about ground mountains, ground mounted solar, but Barbara brought up this well screened, uh, maybe some more thinking on that.
Year round well screened.
Uh, the next substantive comment that the attorney made, uh, let's see, is at the end of the offsite allowance section. So in that section, we talk about, uh, uh, to ensure flexibility for the town and the applicant, the DRB may at its sole discretion allow public open space to be provided outside of the project area. Um, he's suggesting adding a sentence at the end of that paragraph that would state, an applicant proposing public open space outside of the project area, area shall demonstrate control or ownership of the offsite area by submitting draft legal documents, for example, easement deeds, warranty deeds, agreements, et cetera, uh, with the request for an offsite allowance. So I, I think he just wants to, to make sure that a developer doesn't say, oh yeah, I can do it over there. And I got a handshake deal with Bob. He's going to let me do it on his property. This shows it's more than that. Seems like a decent addition.
No problem with that.
Sounds reasonable.
Hmm. Okay. So here's another biggie. Um, and David and I talked about this at some length. The contribution alternative. So this is the, the latter part of the document that says, in lieu of providing all this public open space, uh, the DRB at its sole discretion may allow an applicant to contribute to the improvement of existing area or, or to a suitable town fund. Um, David's suggestion was to not make this, um, at the sole discretion of the DRB, to make this just, it's available to you. It's, it's, you can do one or the other. Um, and that way, he said, we would be in less legal jeopardy should this be, should someone appeal this and say, uh, the DRB took my rights away, you know, by, by changing this to be a by right option, then they have all the flexibility they need. If for some reason they can't, uh, accommodate the public open space, it would, it would sink their development or get in the way of a particular design.
I mean, here's, here's the problem with, with that, right? I understand the legality that, that's being pointed out, but if you make it by right, then chances are it's going to get used quite a bit.
Yes. And several of the planners said, make sure you set those numbers for, for, for your, buy your way out high enough because people will do that.
I mean, and, I mean, you, you stand, I mean, one, not one, I mean, I mean, the, the main objective of this is, is make sure that we have, you know, distributed open space for people to use, right? So they're not on top of each other. Um, if you give a by right, um, contribution alternative and it's used significantly, right, you're basically going to, um, negate what you just tried to do with a, with an open space specification.
Maybe. The, the, the ways that it might not are that, um, in the bullets underneath that section, we talk about that for parcels, 10 acres or larger, um, at least 50% of the, the recommended open space still has to be on the property. You can only buy your way out of half of it if you're on a larger parcel, because the larger the parcel, the more flexibility you have. And then I think the bigger point is actually one Dennis has made at several meetings, which is, we're not just implementing this standard. We're also trying to update and, and significantly revise the official map. And if we're serious about those public, larger public spaces on the official map, then, then someone making a substantial contribution to buy their way out of providing it on their property should help the town purchase or develop those spaces.
It, it, it will, but the official map does not provide, I mean, it is presently structured. It does not provide an alternative to this, right? Really, I mean, we want the official map for, for larger town, you know, infrastructure needs, right? The official map doesn't anticipate, you know, smaller parks and open areas that are well distributed throughout a development, right? This is what would give you that, right? If, if you don't want that distributed, smaller open space in addition, right, to what's on the official map, fine, offer, offer a dollar alternative, right? Because I think if you offer a dollar alternative, right, and somebody can just write the check instead of going through all the, all the design and, and meetings and everything else, that's what you're going to get. And you're only going to get a fund, right, for, um, the official map. And then it's, well, maybe we won't do anything with that until they develop it. Or maybe if they want to develop, maybe, maybe we'll, we'll not, you know, not file through the official map or whatever. I, I'm, I'm just concerned that it, it's going to be the go-to option and, and you're going to end up with only what's on the official map at best. So, I mean, if you, if you make the amount of contribution huge, right, I suppose that stems that, but-
Doesn't the 50% say that we'll get at least half?
We get, you get at least half, but-
Uh, 10 acres and above? Wait, what was it?
A 10 acre and above.
10 acres and larger, yeah. And just remember where our attorney's coming from. He's coming from the legal jeopardy that we might put the town in by having languages one way or another. And again, his, I think his thinking on this from our discussion is that, um, is that it's, it's less likely to be challenged. We're less likely to have, um, a, a court case if a developer can, can, has options. They can either provide it on site or they can pay into a fund or provide it on their neighbor developer's site who's doing something cool over there. And so I-
I, I, I understand, but at, at the same time, the commission is charged with, what are the interests of the town?
Yeah.
You know, or new development.
Right. But those interests aren't served by a, a case that we lose in court and end up getting no public open space because our regulations are deemed unenforceable or, or, you know, unworkable. And that's what, I'm not saying that the attorney is a hundred percent right here. I'm just saying that's his perspective. He's trying to protect us and the town's interests, just like you're trying to protect the town's interest as well. He's just thinking about it from a legal challenge perspective versus a pure planning perspective. But you can think about it. We don't have to decide.
I think I really need to think on that one. I mean, this one really bothers me.
Yeah, there's something about the, the buyout thing bothers me too.
So his other comments in that section, um, and I'll go over some of the planner's comments, but this was echoed by at least one of them. Um, the first bullet says that, uh, if the applicant is going to use this contribution alternative, they have to demonstrate the following four bullets. Um, the first one says that providing the required public open space would present a hardship. That's not specific enough. He said, any, any, any exaction could be deemed a hardship. Uh, and so we need to be more specific about what we mean by that. Um, which I think is a good comment and we can, we can fix that. Um, and the fourth bullet says that the applicant has to demonstrate coordination with the select board regarding the proposed improvement outside the project area and/or contribution to the town fund. Um, I don't think he felt super strongly about this concern, but he did say that it may be problematic if it's, if the DRB is seen as delegating their authority under these regs to the select board. Uh, I still like the idea of coordination, but- I still like the idea of coordination, but I think David's comment was, if the regulations are clearly allowing this, then the DRB should be able to just allow it and not have to get a rubber stamp from the select board or the applicant shouldn't have to get a rubber stamp from the select board.
Is that what coordination implies?
Yeah.
They also have to get a, like a formal approval from the select board?
I don't think that that word means that, but I think it means that they have to demonstrate they've at least had a conversation and there's been some, uh, positive result of that conversation. Might not have to be an approval.
So it's the obligation of the developer to have, to do the coordination, not the DRB. And the select board sit down and say, here's what we've been shown.
That's what, that's what this section says is that the applicant must demonstrate that there's been coordination with the select board. And David's concern is that if your regs are specific enough, the DRB shouldn't have to go outside to another board to get that input.
It, it's not quite the same, but there are other examples of, of the, the DRB de facto coordinating with the select board. The DRB can approve a project. Doesn't mean the project can happen because the select board's got to approve all the water in the, in the sewer.
Yeah.
Yep.
Another check.
Yeah. I think part of the reason for the coordination here is, uh, that we are thinking is that it's, it's this fund and the select board is going to set up that administrative. And also, um, uh, if it's going to go towards a public space that might be dedicated to the town, well, obviously nothing the DRB does can bind the town to accept anything. With that said, um, the last time we had a, a open space, let me donate some money, uh, idea. Um, the select board just could not wrap their hands around it. And, uh, I think we, you know, I, I don't want to speak ill of our select board in any instance, but in that instance, I feel like they missed an opportunity because they didn't really understand it. And the DRB seemed to think it was a positive thing. I think the, the DRB would have approved that, but the select board didn't. And I think like, John, you asked, does coordination mean approval in this sense? I don't think it does, but I think the select board could think it does. Um, and, and if they insert themselves in that way, you know, it's, it could be, could lead to, uh, an unfortunate result.
And you're saying that it, maybe this isn't the place to do it, but maybe it's not a good idea to say that the DRB in fact is the one as part of their process needs to coordinate, maybe a different word, with the select board about this.
Yeah. And that, that could be, uh, something outside of these regulations. That could be, you know, an administrative level sort of procedure that the DRB would, would consult with and seek input from the select board.
I mean, there is a connection because we're talking about some money that the select board would decide about spending.
Right. I think my concern is like, what if the select board is like thinking, okay, well, we have this much money in the fund and, um, we, we, if we could just, if we could just extract this much from this developer, then.
Then we'd have enough to do.
We'll have enough to do this project. And whereas the DRB isn't going to make those calculations, they're just going to say, is this a reasonable amount per what the regs say? And then you're, the whole extortion thing just makes it, makes me a little queasy.
Why shouldn't these two bodies discuss such a proposal from a developer?
Well, I think as a quasi judicial board, the DRB can accept input from any other board, select board, conservation commission, whoever, and it would be incumbent upon the select board to speak up. Um, I don't know that the DRB is going to do that, you know, go appear at a select board meeting and talk about this. Cause they, they couldn't actually. It would be improper, you know, that everything is supposed to happen in the context of the DRB's review. And that may seem overly procedural, but I, but, yeah.
Did, did the lawyer comment at all about the legal hazards that might result if the town takes money from a developer, whether this be by right or, or by, you know, um, sole discretion of the DRB? And then fails to provide the public infrastructure on a schedule or at all?
No, he didn't bring that up. We could certainly ask him the question. Uh, it's not a bad question.
Yeah, there seemed to be some obligation on the town's part if, if such money is agreed.
No, that's only for impact fees. Um, but when it.
Kind of like an impact fee.
Sort of, sort of. I had one planner ask the question, how is this different from an impact fee? But, um, uh, we did, we do have cases since I've been here where developers have provided the town with money to make a, an improvement that doesn't need to be made right away, but should be made at some point in the future. And instead of the developer being on the hook, they give the town the money and say, you do it when you're good and ready. And in those cases, it, it has, we have had some problems with that because of the, the, the glacial pace at which, you know, the town operates.
And even if you're really going to apply these funds to, you know, an official map item, right? The funds are not going to cover the official map item.
Right. And it could take years.
It could take, it could take many, many years in order to, in order to do that.
Yeah. And so I don't, I don't know that these regulations want to prescribe those future actions by the select board and the, and spending money out of a fund, but in the, in these regs, we're telling the select board, you need to establish the fund. So maybe that's where you have the conversation is in the establishment of the fund. There's some understanding about A, what it'll be used for and where it will be used geographically in, in the town and when, you know, at what point.
The unlinking of expenditure to any one particular project that might donate, right? And where, right? I mean, I, I, I don't want to run into a situation where we prescribe this, people use it. And then, you know, somebody goes to court and says, well, you know, I, I contributed money six years ago and nothing's been done. Therefore my, you know, I should get my money back ala an impact fee. Um.
Well, I can certainly ask the attorney about that if you like.
I, I would like that.
Okay. Okay. Uh, his next comment, um, in the paragraph that starts amount of contribution, um, there's a, there's a bit of a formula in there, but, but then it goes on at the end to say, for parcels 10 acres or more, the contribution amount shall be no less than twice the projected cost of the proposed public open space to be created within the project area. So again, we say, if you're 10 acres or more, you've got plenty of land, you gotta preferably do it all on your site. But if you want to pay to not do some of it, you still have to do at least half. And this says, for those parcels, the amount you're going to contribute for the half you're not doing is going to be, uh, no less than twice the projected cost of what you are doing. So it's a, you know, we're inflicting some pain, like do it on your site and probably save yourself some money. Uh, David's comment was that that's too vague. What prevents an applicant from low balling the estimate on the, on the actual site improvements? And then, you know, writing a very small check. Got that same comment from another planner in their comments. Um,
On this 10 acre site, do you have enough room for public open space? Do you still have enough room for just regular green space for them?
You mean private that's not available to the public, but would be available to the neighborhood or the, um, well, I guess.
And are we thinking that those people would like their own private green space?
Backyards and, and.
I would think.
Sure. Yeah. Well, that's where, that's where we should look back at what the requirements are. So if, if it's a 10 acre site and it, we're in the village, uh, district where we have the greatest allowance for density, uh, the base density allows for four dwelling units per acre. So 40 units on 10 acres. Um, if they get some bonuses, it can go up to more than just a little over double that. So let's say a project came in on a 10 acre site and wanted to do the maximum density. So they, let's say 80 units. Um, well, we can just run it through our, our minimum required open space or guideline minimum open space, however you want to do it, based on the attorney's suggestion. Um, 80 units, 200 square feet per dwelling unit. So what's the math on that? Uh, 16 and four zeros. So, uh, 16, 16, 16,000 square feet. So 16,000 square feet of, of public open space on a 10 acre parcel. An acre is 43,560 square feet. So 4, 400, 400 and, uh, 430,000 square feet of that 16,000 will be public open space. It's a pretty small chunk. I think there's still plenty. My point is I think there's still plenty of room on that 10 acre parcel for all the backyards, side yards, maybe some, you know, neighborhood only spaces. It, it's a, it's a tiny slice of, of it in that example.
And it's all in how it's laid out too.
Um, that was it from the attorney.
What did you get from the planners?
All right. So a summary of what I got from the planners, um, lots of, you know, simple word substitutions and typographical sorts of things. I won't bother to bore you with, but, uh, so a comment about, uh, linking this provision in the applicability section back to the town plan in some way. Is there a certain goals of the town plan that this new section of the regs is going to, um, implement? Thought that was a reasonable suggestion. Um, we don't have to make it. I mean, we can, we could talk about how it's implementing that and not have that direct language in the regulations themselves because we do have to demonstrate it, uh, but might, might be good if it could be done briefly. Um, another comment was there, there are no details on how the space will be made available to the public. Is it going to be deeded to the town? Is it going to be, is the town going to get an easement on it? Is it just going to be the good graces of, you know, the, the private landowner or developer? Um, with some caution about, uh, private developments can, can have ex, can have some exclusivity to them in terms of what look like public spaces. So that speaks back to.
Yeah. Those areas as well.
That was another comment that, that one somebody made was, um, who's, who's responsible for the maintenance of those spaces? In our, um, plan unit development regulations in the zoning, um, and to refresh your memory on that, we basically have two types of subdivision conventional. You just meet the minimum lot size requirements and setbacks, meet all the standards, conventional subdivision. We have an option for a PUD plan unit development where you get to sort of rewrite the zoning. Um, and you're doing that because you have a really innovative idea that, that the zoning, some of the zoning standards might not allow. So you want to ask for some waivers. Um, and part of the, the return for getting that flexibility is we tell you, you better have a master planned project and you better set aside a certain amount of open space, more in the rural parts of town, less in the village. And in that section, that PUD section, we talk about how that open space has to be set aside. And we say, we, we actually make it very flexible. We say it could be deeded to the town. It could be, um, it could have a permanent conservation easement on it. Or, um, it could be, uh, described, um, and indicated on the survey plat in any, you know, association language. So it's clear how it should be managed and what it's for. So for this section, which is not the PUD section, but maybe we want to have a little blurb that does a similar sort of thing where we say, you know, this public open space being created, um, needs to be open, non-exclusive to the general public, however you want to word that. Um, and that can be demonstrated by, you know, any of these options deeded to the town easements. I don't know, whatever, whatever the other options would be. Do you think that would add value to the document or?
I do. I, I, yeah, I'm also thinking that, um, and I'm not sure the language needs to be in there, but just that, uh, you know, this fund that's going to be set up, if it's going to be several funds or one fund, you know, some of that money would need to go toward maintenance if, if we're going to take over maintenance of some of these.
Perhaps. I, I think when you recommend this to the select board and, and recommend the fund, you want to think about that. They'll want to think about that because it, it would, in my mind, I understand what you're saying. But it would be a shame if, if we accept, if we created enough open spaces or developers did, and then we had the rights to them and also the maintenance responsibilities, that additional funds going in from other developments who are not providing it, but paying into the fund, we're simply going to maintain all these other places.
Yep.
It seems like the select board in my mind, when we accept or create public infrastructure, we have to, we have to think about that budget for maintenance and just uh, swallow that when, when we bring it to the voters. Um, but, but it could work, it could work that way and just sort of a policy decision, you know?
The, the way the land conservation fund works now, as I understand it is an organization, the land trust, for example, makes a request, a formal request, uh, to the conservation commission, I believe it is. And they make a, uh, not a ruling, but they come to a position and make a recommendation to the select board.
Mm hmm.
So it's a very specific withdrawal of the money for this particular project.
Mm hmm.
Um, this is a little different in that we're talking about actually building something specific that the town would do. Uh, might it not be structured in a similar fashion that it goes through a, a board? Not the conservation board maybe, but maybe, uh, and, and gets reviewed after being requested and, and, and advice is given to the select board.
Yeah, I think it should, I think it could work the same way.
Slightly different version of the same loop.
I don't think that addresses Maggie's question though about the maintenance. Um, but I suppose that group could recommend that portion of the fund to use for maintenance.
Right. That goes in as part of that package.
Hmm.
Because you know that, that fountain in the middle of lot one with the gold cherubs, you know, eventually that's going to break and need to, you know, somebody's going to.
And, and that's where I think it's important to, where this is a good comment because it's important to think about which of these public open spaces, uh, want to be maintained by the town or owned by the town? And which ones really belong in the private ownership, but just are going to be available to the public to walk through, sit in, enjoy. So the, the pocket park that we like to beat up on next to Kenny drugs there, um, that was an attempt at, at something like this. You know, we all have issues with how it turned out. Um, town's never going to take that over. That's private property, but the public is welcome to be there. And should the tree snap in half or the bush go up in flames because it was too close to a transformer? Um, the private developer is, is on the hook to, to fix those things, not the town. And I, I, I think there are advantages to that and there are places where that makes sense. And then there are other times where that doesn't make sense, you know, where maybe the, the official map, for example, is on the property and they are creating some open space within that official map boundary and saying, you wanted this, I'm making it for you, but you better damn well take it over.
I mean, towards, right, towards those arguments, we, we probably ought to put some language into this that says, well, you know, if, if you're going to put some things that say, well, you know, it, 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 you know, it could be given to the town. It, it, it could be, you know, an easement could be given, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I think, you know, I, I don't, I don't know that it's in the town's interest to make, you know, have the, have the developer make that decision, right?
Um, right. We would have to have this coordination with the select board.
Yeah. I mean, we as a town want to have that decision about whether it, you know, whether it's an easement. And, you know, I suppose if it's an easement, we still need language that says the developer is going to maintain this, right? Or whether we want, you know, we want to pursue accepting it from the town, in which case we, right? We don't, because everything will be given to the town.
It's a good point. And, and it's true that during the DRB review process, um, even for, uh, Even for uh infrastructure that we know the town will eventually take over. They never agree to take it over during the DRB review at all. It always happens much later. And so irrevocable offers of dedication are given by developers based on, you know, what they think the town is interested in. And then uh the DRB has to assume that it's gonna stay in private ownership. And make sure that all the conditions and legal language reflect that.
Maintenance of of, you know, said public space, right, is the responsibility of developer unless, you know, the town agrees to.
So that was another uh comment from one of the planners was. Yeah, liability issues. The good part is that in Vermont, as I understand it. Landowner liability laws are are very strong, so unless you are um aware of. And actively uh avoiding the repair of a known hazard. Um, you don't have any liability for people walking around on your property, whether they're hunting on your property or.
That public open space, put a swing set, whatever, he's long gone. Association's gonna be in charge of taking care of that, right?
Right, yeah, and what happens when the swing gets into disrepair and the kid swings on it and breaks their neck?
They're gonna get sued.
Well, yeah, and the question is, would the town get sued as well? Um, for having compelled that space to be created in the first place. Even though we didn't have any maintenance responsibility.
Know where you want to have public open space, that's where we should do it and.
Right, and the town own it and take care of it and all that.
And all these other people just put money toward it.
Well, we have those examples today, right? So um, the one I mentioned in in next to Kenny Drugs. There's an open space right there with tables and chairs. What if there's a slip and fall?
How did how did this decision come down to put that there? Was that just the developer's plan or were they, I'll use the word compelled, right?
It was, it was both. Um, it was the developer's design and decision, but they were doing it. Um, as part of the requirements of a planned unit development that said that you had to have a certain amount of open space. Central organizing features, that sort of thing.
So we're already in trouble.
Well, that's where I'm getting at, is I think that these associations, Green Street's another one, right? So so we have public easements over the sidewalks in that Green Street project, so the public can meander through that. But we don't maintain those sidewalks, they do. We don't own them, they do. So if somebody slips and falls on the sidewalk this winter in that development. And wants to sue, I think they're gonna sue the landowner, which is Champlain Housing Trust. And I think the landowner is gonna have an insurance policy to deal with that, you know, the same way the town would if if it were actually our. Sidewalk, si- similar with, you know, um Kenny Drugs little uh green space there. I I think that's just, I think it's an interesting question, but I think that in the modern litigious age. Everybody's lawyered up and has insurance to deal with that kind of stuff.
Right, but I mean, the more times you go after that insurance, your rates go up.
Does that include that sidewalk that comes from Green Street up to and meets the sidewalk on?
On one sixteen?
Is that theirs?
That that comes up to one sixteen? Over by uh Silver Street? Yes, that's theirs.
That belongs to Green Street?
Yes, I think in that case, that sidewalk exits the Green Street project and then travels across uh. Property, but they were the landowners.
If somebody fell on that part of the sidewalk, you're saying that would go to Green Street's.
I'm not sure who would go to, it'd probably go to both Rob Bass and Laura Carl Smith and the Green Street folks. Uh, just depends on who's maintaining it, I don't even know.
Who who keeps it clear of snow?
One of them, I don't know which one takes. Not the town.
Even though the town is keeping the sidewalk on one sixteen clear. It's not their responsibility to go.
Correct. Similar with the all the sidewalks in internal to the Kenny Drugs site. Um, not the ones on the streets, but the internal ones, we don't, we don't plow those.
Creekside?
We did take over those. So we do. Um, so that was one of the comments, no details on how it will be made available to the public, deed, easement, what have you. And liability questions. Another person said we should run more examples on existing developments in town and see what would have happened to those projects. It it might be a good way to see about unintended consequences. We, I think we verbally tried to do it for Green Street. I think it might be good to actually do it on paper. Um, for Green Street, for Lyman Meadows, for Thistle Hill, and maybe for the Farmall Drive neighborhood. So I I thought that was a good suggestion. We could do that. Yeah, I think you guys could also take a crack at it if you're game, but yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to do it, it's not difficult. Another comment was that uh the design standards, especially the recommended minimum area. Seemed to be mostly about size but not type, type of open space. And the suggestion was to maybe consider consulting with a landscape architect for guidelines on type.
And assign a square footage by type?
That's not what she meant, she just meant, um, if you want to specify how big it needs to be, that's great. Um, if you want to specify some of the design elements, that's great, but you haven't really told us what kind of spaces these are gonna be. I'm not sure we need to do this, I think that we can leave that open to flexibility of the designer and the DRB to review it, but that was the comment. Consider getting a landscape architect's opinion on this stuff. Uh, there was another comment about worried worried about the um contribution option. And having it lead to low ball amounts and. Uh, this person suggested maybe the language could include uh the requirement that the. Um, the estimates be verified by an independent landscape architect. Which the DRB has the, has the power to compel. Yeah, I don't know that we need to say it, because if 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 we had concerns that it was a low ball estimate, we would recommend. And the DRB has that power. Um, another comment was that um. We have a lot of excluded areas, like no wetlands, no steep slopes, no flood hazard areas, these areas can't count for open space. And one person said, you know, sometimes you get some interesting uh open space in such areas. I think we've had that conversation and we know why we don't want those areas in these places, but it did make me think about Overlook Park. Remember on the official map, we put in, I forget what letter it is, but we put in Overlook Park up on the. The hill above NRG, the open spot where they have sort of a chair and it's a pretty spot to be. Um, and then uh they're proposing trails behind it into the woods, and the official map shows one connecting trail that sort of goes that direction. There are a lot of steep slopes there that that wouldn't fit our category. Um, and yet I think what we just delineated for Overlook Park incorporates some of them. So we may want to say something else, uh, at least on steep slopes.
Give a bit of flexibility for.
We don't want to say we want this open space, but when we, you can't count it towards opens in this section. This comment, I'm not sure how valuable it is, but I'll pass it along, uh, it was. Is the public open space meant to be accessory to another principal use? Um, or is it meant to be the actual destination in and of itself, i.e. its own principal use? And I think his question was, do you want to specify that or speak to that in the regulations? I I personally, I think it could be either, you know, if it's if it's something that's incorporated into the middle of a development and the private. Project is gonna maintain it, it could be very much accessory to what's going on there, even though it's, people go. It could also be the official map element for that property and there, you know, then it's gonna be a destination in of itself.
Do we have something that we can point to or think about on our official, proposed official map now that? Sort of tickles that question and gives us a sense of.
No, I think most of the official map elements are principal destination uses or or spaces.
I think we've thought of them as that way.
Yeah, I I think, you know, this this would be more, a more significant question for smaller spaces that maybe don't comport with that. And then the question is, is it, which is it? Again, I'm not sure it matters, but I I just thought I'd mention it.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of why that matters. Yeah, I I don't see it as a big issue.
That was it for the 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 big ticket message or comments that I got from the planners. Like I said, lots of nitpicky um suggested language changes. Many of them are good. So how would you like to proceed? What we've, I've only done this once before, it was with the outdoor lighting section, and I think I had four people respond. And um, you never saw their responses, I worked, I sort of collected those. And and made a bunch of changes in a track change document and presented it to you and said, based on the peer review, here's what I think we should change. Um, I'm happy to do that again in this case, um, that's probably the most efficient way to do it. But if you want to see all these suggestions and talk about each one, you know, we can, we could try to do that, that could take us forever. Some, a lot of them are track changes, so they've taken the document and marked it up and had made comments in it. So it wouldn't be hard to share, but I think though, you know, five or six sets of comments going through. Nine sets of eyes for a discussion could take us until twenty twenty.
There's some of them like the, you know, consultant landscape engineer, maybe that that's not.
Yeah, that one, I think we, you, doesn't seem like it's necessary. Like I said, I'm I'm happy to make those calls and then provide you a track changes document, so you can look at those and say, no, yes, no. But that, you're giving me a little autonomy there to.
I think, I think you've already filtered the most important feedback. And and we had one round of discussion here, I think you understand, you know, where the board is, what our concerns are. Et cetera, is is part of whatever editing you do of the document. You know, based on feedback from the lawyer, from other planners. Uh, myself, I would, I would say, you know, with that understanding, go ahead, make the updates in a in a track changes draft. And and get.
Get them back to you.
Yeah, I don't know how anybody else feels, but.
That that sounds fine, I think maybe you make a notice, and maybe it'll be obvious, this is something our attorney felt. Here to happen, and this is something that I got from one of my colleagues.
I think that would be helpful, I can do that.
Some waiting to.
Good suggestion.
Yeah, some kind of uh, yeah, I can do that, that's a good idea. Okay, well, that's what I have on village area design standard feedback.
I noticed the word shall appears in this this document a lot, and for some reason, I'm having a problem with that versus will. Is there, does anybody else feel anything about that?
Shall is the.
Shall be provided.
Legal equivalent of, you have no choice, you must do this.
So that's the way that's interpreted?
In courts, that's the word you want if you don't want any discretion. Should is a, is a, is a much different word, but I think will and shall have the same. That's been tested in the courts quite a lot, yeah.
Alright, uh, so we are on to number five, minutes of September twenty-six, twenty eighteen. The commission wants to take a moment, open that up and have a look. Anyone have any changes?
No, I don't.
I'm I'm not sure, on page three. One, two, three, fourth comment down, my comment. JK would add a semi-commercial industrial category to the standards. We should say something about the building there so as not to impair them from building a functional building. I'm not quite sure what I was talking about there as expressed, and I, I didn't go back to the video to.
You must have said this.
To myself say this, I I must have said something there.
Or anybody else?
Does anybody else remember what I was talking about? I don't know what else to say. I don't understand what I was saying based on this, so take it out.
Shall I delete the whole thing or leave the first part?
Delete the whole, delete the whole thing. I I don't know what even the first part.
Paragraph there, that one line paragraph, I guess.
Right, exactly. Thank you.
Any other comments? Alright, anyone have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second. Alright, all in favor? When opposed? Abstain?
That would be me.
Yeah, that would be you. Alright, minutes proved, uh, other business, Alex.
Um, do I have any? I don't, I don't think I have any. Oh, right.
The conservation commission is joining all is uh leading a mapping initiative, I guess we'll say for the town plans for natural resources mapping. Meeting is next Wednesday, and we really, really would like attendance, um, we have Jesse Moore coming to talk about. Sort of options that he sees and would love to get feedback from all of you, ideally.
Are you, you're gonna post that on front porch?
Yeah, yeah, well, I take that back, I don't know if we're posting off our porch form. I think we're, we're just trying to involve sort of key players right now, and then.
So where and what time?
So it'll be here, main hall, town hall, our main area of town hall, seven o'clock from Wednesday.
We're sending some folks to that, I mean, you've been in conversation with the land trust all along too.
So as I mentioned in the email, I won't be here for your next meeting. Um, so I'd I'd appreciate some feedback, I guess, right now or through Joe later on how you want the agenda crafted. We need to put a official map, public input at the front end, you know, just like we did tonight. And then beyond that, I'm, I guess I'd be looking for input on what you'd like to talk about, if anything. We talked about me making these changes in a track changes document. And I don't know that that's a good idea to talk about when I'm not here, because I think you're gonna ask me questions and about why I made those changes. And I won't be here to explain.
I won't be here at that meeting either, this next.
Yeah, I was wondering if more discussion on the, just brainstorming on architectural stuff might be relevant, but if you're not here, that's not a good idea.
Counting right, Ralph is not here either.
I believe Ralph is still away.
Missing three meetings.
Something like that. Yeah, so could be a short meeting, or um if you have other ideas for discussion items.
Short meeting is fine.
Yeah, no problem with that. Well, why don't, uh, if you have any ideas between now and next week, you know, run them by me and Joe and we can. Get them on the agenda if it makes sense, otherwise, official map, public input.
There was something in the minutes that, uh, read them again, but. Don't remember what it was.
And Alex, on the thumb drive, maybe that is held until we're through this. Little step of getting the feedback and then we can have more time to focus on. Examples of what we want and don't want, I thought that was a great way of putting it, I found some.
Alright, do, okay, sounds good.
Alright, motion adjourned.
So move.
Thank you, everybody.